Alright, it might be working. It looks like it is. So there's been a couple of... Oh, we haven't even started yet.
I'd like to call the meeting to order. All in favor? We've done a bunch of workshops. Yes, we have.
So there were a couple of additions. We got a request from Lake Inasagutiko Association. BIM changed the mowing from 1,000 to 10,000. Mowing of road sides.
From 1,000 to 10,000?
Because last meeting, we were wondering why it was only 1,000. We couldn't figure out.
10 total. What was it?
With 1,000, it should have been 10,000, he said. For the mowing of all the road sides.
Well, last year, we budgeted $6,000 and it came to 88.
And Zatic Library submitted one. So there's a few changes. I think those are the main ones.
Seems like we had so much rain in both for two years in a row that I agree. Under Winter Roads, I know that BIM's contract for planning goes up every year. What's the other road commissioner request? It's 83,000.
Salt and Sand.
Kathy thinks we're on page seven.
This one?
Right. Is the going's budget worksheet? It should be the same page numbers.
Yeah, I wanted to go in after having a chance to look at a little bit of... I put a couple of notes. So as far as mileage goes, it was $2,000 that was requested.
That's...
You would increase it to three?
I estimated it at two. You guys said three.
You had recommended three. But looking at some other numbers, the state rate per mileage is 54 cents and the federal rate is 70 cents a mile.
We use 70. It's in our ordinance that we use the IRS rate. But you may want to increase that because the new ACO submitted a request and it's going to be quite a bit. And Constable, Road Commissioner. I was thinking somebody else.
Animal Control.
Yeah. Animal Control, what did he say? Mileage 1750, he's estimating. For the year.
Based on the number of calls a town got before. I think that's 27.
There's a request in there. He's got it split up by town. And under Hartford, he has 1750 for mileage.
It's under requests?
Yep. The requests, I don't have one for every line item, but they're in order on how they fall in the budget worksheet. So he's right after Deputy Clerks.
ACO?
Yep.
7500.
Well, the wages are 57. Mileage was 1750. And there was training and cost of his phone and cameras. Uniform. Split up between all the towns.
Is he on the ordinance committee? Or is this coming after he doesn't know where...
Something...
No, she said Steve. No, she said, "Is he on the ordinance committee?" No. There's a wage committee.
Um, do Jerry was sitting in this truck? I just didn't know if he didn't know where the meeting was or...
He's still a lot more than the other towns.
It's kind of based on population.
I'm looking at Department Administration under Increases. Under Request, excuse me. So he's a thing here called contracted shelter, but he doesn't have anything in with us because we already contracted a shelter ourselves.
Yeah, it's blank, yeah.
Yeah. I just wanted to verify it wasn't missing.
That would be the next page in the requests.
Did you get 3,000 is going to be left for mileage?
No, I don't.
Well, we haven't used any in the ACO budget in the past because she wasn't in town.
Some.
Right.
She would submit mileage once in a while.
Yeah.
I have detail in here.
He was so close that we thought, "That's a call, he's coming." But she would try to often triage it over the phone.
Bash on 13869. So she only submitted mileage once for the past year.
So we...
You have detail under Journal Detail Report of everything that has been spent out of each account up until March 1st.
Right.
I should have put last year's in there. Do you think I should do last year's for the Budget Committee? Detail of everything that was spent for the whole entire last year?
You mean the current year written?
No, prior.
Twenty-three? Twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five.
Yeah. I mean, keep this in here, but you think I should do that year also so they can see for the whole year every single thing that came out of the account?
Excuse me. Sorry. On this?
Yes, you.
Sorry. I mean, I guess you could have it available. I mean, I'm looking at this big one that I printed.
Which has changed.
Right. What, the previous years are the same?
Yeah.
And it's, this is current up until 3/1. For what's been spent, but...
Totals only, yeah.
Right. Did you get anything in from summer?
No, I pardon, nothing.
I'm wondering if it would just be better having to bill us.
We can put that 3,000 in there. I don't know if I check it out. Public Safety. I can put, we can put 3,000 back in the budget. I took it out because I thought they were going to deliver like a Social Service request.
They never do.
Not yet. I haven't got a ticket on it.
Oh, was we going to decide that at town meeting? Do you think I saw that in there?
We don't have any money amount. I need a request. Unless we just put it under Public Safety through... Usually it's 3,000.
She got something from Lake Inasunko, but nothing from Bear Pond and from...
Yeah, Bear Pond too.
Bear Pond too.
And the Zatic Library.
Ken was later again?
Yeah, just got it like today, yesterday.
Who's up with that? I mean, they know we... December.
That's why I have December. Or an early deadline in case there's any stragglers.
Alright, do we want to finish going through the all the requests, which we've not seen? Or many of them we haven't seen? And then start on page seven from where we left off the other day, or eight? We'll finish looking through these. You want to go right to that.
You want to work on the requesting? Put it down?
Do you have an end goal in mind?
An end goal of what?
The budget? What, you want to see at the bottom line?
No.
No? Okay.
As low as we can make it without hurting people too much. Tighten your belt.
You want the mail rate to stay the same? Do you want it only increased by one? I'm just asking what your goal is.
How does that, how does that partial rebound work into this?
That's not going to affect anything except for the homestead exemption. Because people are supposed to get $25,000 for a homestead exemption. We're at 55%. So they're only going to get 55% of that. Only thing it would affect.
Which is a lot of people that live here. It's going to affect everybody either. It's homestead.
So if your mail rate goes up, plus they lose some of their homestead.
Right, so like last, last year when, and the year before, when we said taxes didn't go up. It didn't go up for some, but it did go for us.
Because the mail rate went down, but our certified ratio dropped. So people got less of an exemption. Wasn't a huge difference, but a little bit.
Food Bank didn't submit any, uh, budget?
Yep, it's under Social Services.
Well, I can hear Budget Request, but I'm just looking for the numbers from last year. Usually we get a little rundown.
Yeah, that's all I got.
I'm sure they still have them. RCAM and Seniors Plus, do they send us anything that says this is how many people we served in Hartford?
Yep, they should be under requests. Social Services is towards the end.
Also, it's not under, it's not in the request, but it's...
They're in the same order. They're listed in the worksheet. RCAM, 48 residents between 22 and 23. Seniors Plus, I only put like the main letter in here. I might have more information in my pile.
Forty-eight residents for RCAM.
25 for Seniors Plus. Meals on Wheels, five residents. We've got the breakdown. Do you want to see it?
No, I'm just going to write that down. Twenty-five and five.
Well, no, this, it's just broken down. Twenty-five residents. And five were Wheels on Wheels. Seven were Seniors Plus, social dining sites. And it goes on, 17... I'll show it to you.
Seven and Seniors Plus?
There's a, there's a list of breakdowns.
So 25 people in all they served. They delivered to five residents. And then they have dining sites. And 49 meals were enjoyed by seven residents at a Seniors Plus social dining site. But that's not here. But it could have been, I suppose, seven residents. That drove there from Hartford? I think the closest one is Lewiston. I just got to take that back because I copied and pasted to town meeting.
Yep.
Budget request. This is Lady Moore cut back when the deputy clerk.
It's up to you.
What are you, what are you suggesting?
I know that, what was it? It's over a year ago that the selectman wanted me to hire someone who could handle taking over in case something happened.
Yep.
Now we have two.
Right. And you want us to make the recommendation? Is that what you'd like us to do?
No, no.
Guess we should start that where we were and move forward. Page eight, is that what you... Nine we left off on.
Do you, while we, while I'm on this page, do you want to put a money amount in for fire expenses again? Because I took it out.
Right, because we thought they were going to put something in. I think we, we should budget it.
I think Jason said if they would have charged us for those fires in Hartford, it was like, oh, I don't know if it was $7,000, $8,000, $9,000. Who would have been billed that they never billed us for? So...
For all the fires last year?
So that was a ridiculous year. There was a lot going on. That's not typical.
Why don't we put the 3,000 back? I mean, right now, they haven't been getting anything. I know years ago they did, but...
Right. How do you guys feel about five? And if it doesn't get used, where does that go? Right back to...
General fund.
So...
Got it.
That's let, that's half that we would have been billed. And if it doesn't get used, it doesn't get used. If it, if we don't budget it, if, let's just say we have the three grand and it goes, we have a crazy year again. Where would we draw that money from? Exactly. So if we budget for it and they don't use it, I don't know. What do you guys think? That's my thought.
Where it can be. Where was that on the...
Page seven, the first line.
We'll go five?
Yeah.
If you don't use it, you don't use it.
Right.
Did we figure out what that $4,400 was for recycling fee? It was a surcharge of some sort.
Uh, no, it's an annual fee. I think I put the contract in the request.
I hope. Has to do with recycling charge, right?
Yeah. It has, it's under your requi, under your request, yeah. Recycling handling charge, $4,400.
And it's in the contract, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
We just missed it last year.
I thought we said at the last workshop that was not mentioned in the contract.
Yep, it is. Yep, I give you, there's a copy of the contract or their price list right in the front. I mean, in your request.
Because I always thought it was a direct correlation those that we recycle.
That's the weekly, our, my weekly.
That time stays a shame.
This is their contract. Now you start seeing attached sheet. Got $4,400. Recycling handling charge.
How come we couldn't come up with this the other night? Three, four, 24.
My friend said what it was.
You said it was a surcharge and this one...
No, no, the surcharge... No, no, the surcharge was the one we just got billed, we didn't know what it was for.
Right. Had the three hundred and sixty-six dollars.
I thought that was your forty-four.
Yeah.
Nope. Has she even gotten back to you?
I called Jerry and said there was no looking into it, I haven't heard anything. I haven't received any emails back from there, she's, so they're not gonna get it until.
You already know what it is tonight. It's the same way. Recycling got picked up once, you said, for the first time in months.
Really? They take your thing?
They didn't call. But they didn't.
They take your, your bucket bins?
No, they didn't take my bins, but they did take my, the recycling out of them.
So, oops, trash is going up like ten grand. By twenty-eight, twenty-nine. Did you know that according to this? This isn't bid, this isn't a contract, is it bid?
They'll give us a three years or whatever it is, right?
Yeah.
Thank you for the opportunity to bid for this contract.
Yeah, we accepted it last year.
But it's the same with all the contracts. The plowing has a different price for each year. The fire rescue, they have different prices for each year.
Yeah, usually go up. So if this just switched.
He has to honor it, don't he? Archie's, three, Archie runs out.
The tipping, it said, may vary depending on how much they're charged for the tipping.
All right, something's not sitting right here. July first, twenty-twenty-four, and then he sold it, which made us no longer bound by that, we've had this discussion in, in the soul court meeting. We're not bound by that and neither are they.
But we don't have an option right now. We get an option on the.
Unless they put it back out to bid.
And we talked about that and we haven't. But yeah, this is, this is a.
Doesn't he have the honor Archie's contract?
Yes.
No, it, it is a contract, he has to sign it.
Until Archie's runs out.
Where? Where did we sign it?
We signed it somewhere last year, we agreed to take it in.
That was true, that was this. And he sold it.
Yes, I know, but it's still Archie's and until we make a change.
We put it out to bid now. We don't, it even go up more.
He has to honor Archie's contract until it runs out. But that doesn't mean we have to honor Archie's contract, we're just, at this point, we don't have another option. I mean, it doesn't mean we can't put it out to bid, I'm just saying that in budgetary stuff, we gotta have something in that number.
The whole thing with bidding is to see what there is for numbers. And if his comes in and we accept it, that's one thing, but to just go.
No, we didn't put it out to bid. Not the new owners, but Archie's, but Archie's, if it had to bid, we got it three or four bids and we. The slut man shows Archie's.
But then when it's sold, we didn't put it out to bid again.
No, because we have not made a decision on what to do, because we were looking at other options at the same time. Doesn't mean we can't, we just haven't.
We can't just not.
We've got a whole bunch of stuff, right? Got a lot on our plates.
Right.
But where will it go up?
It's already going up.
Oh, it will.
Pre- the, the new owners.
It is.
Right. Just like plowing too.
Oh, yeah, everything.
You put in, in every year it goes up.
Is she in?
Yeah, that went up a lot. I need that back, so I don't lose it.
But you have a copy of that sheet in your book.
Sorry, leave that twenty-four.
Can we discuss that those recycling bins are the ones you purchase here and people buy? That would say Hartford honor.
We just gotta figure out how many we would sell in one year to put a number in the revenue.
Right.
Cause I'm sure we're not gonna sell all of them in one year.
You could, you could cut that number in half.
True.
We would just. We would just have to pay for shipping, I don't know how much, this is with free shipping. We get less, we have to pay for shipping from somewhere out of state.
But then if we're stuck with all of these bins that nobody uses.
Oh, they'll use them. I mean, we bought, how many did we buy years ago and they sat out back and now there's none? They're all gone. It's up to you, we don't have to do that at all, just some people ask, but then I don't know how much they would pay for them.
When we talked about twelve dollars? Twelve dollars? If you have free.
Yeah, but how many people would come in and want to pay twelve dollars for them or use a cardboard box instead?
Exactly, so why would we do two hundred and fifty? Why would we bury ourselves with bins that people don't wanna pay for? It seemed like a good idea the other day.
Take it all out, it's fine.
Wait, see what happens. We might own his orange bins.
I think we don't have other options.
Yeah.
You wanna take it out?
Pass that out? She's having on that page.
Were you taking it out or leaving it in?
I took it out, I took it out.
All right.
Yeah.
Oops.
Yeah, I think, uh, I did have to do some real squeezing, very county in the school, or so if you break down, um. I'd rather have a little money left over than to be scrambling. What were you proposing about the deputy clerk? You threw something out there and you didn't detail it, what are you thinking?
Yeah.
You obviously see where we can cut money somewhere, what are you thinking?
Nope.
Got a lot.
Oh, eight hours or?
Are you looking to do, split that between two, are you looking to put somebody in retirement, what are you thinking?
That was the intention when we, uh, uh, did that, is to, um, is to have someone that could do some of the things that Leanne is already doing and so, but now looking at it, I know she's got coverage for, extra for two days, but if we could cut that back.
So you have one day with nobody and so Monday and Saturdays.
Just fine.
And you have coverage Tuesday and Wednesday, help assistance. What are you thinking? Kathy, you're in, you're in here more than anybody, what do you think?
Can you split it?
What would that look like?
Yeah, we cut the, um, budget in half, pretty much. Might wanna add on a few days for if I ever take a vacation or town meeting days or.
So, how, how about this thought? What if we, um, cut it down to, uh, uh, right now, we've got sixteen hours, or if we cut it down to twelve or fourteen hours and, uh, with eight hours here and the, like twelve hours. Eight hours would be the day that one clerk's works and then the other days would be coverage, uh, elections or special town meetings to cover that coverage and if she doesn't use it, we don't need it.
So twelve, twelve times fifty-two, times the nineteen sixty-five, a little bit of a raise.
Does somebody want to retire?
Not everyone.
Not everyone?
No.
Times, uh.
How old Barbara?
We can't talk about it, we're on camera.
Yeah. All right, twelve times fifty-two equals six hundred and twenty-four hours.
We've got eight thirty-two.
Times nineteen sixty-five. Be twelve thousand two sixty-one, I don't even know if we need that many, but.
Right, if you don't use it. But you're out sick, she's covering, if, uh, you actually take some vacation, which was the whole plan.
I think it's a little more than what she would work, but you never know.
Had I read somewhere that one clerk was being trained to cover the other clerk who was supposed to retire? Or did I dream that?
The slutman wanted me to hire someone who could handle the office if something happened to me.
In the, in that, the website system.
Okay, and you did, okay. Do we need that second deputy? We do not.
But if you do one day, eight hours a week, and then you take a day off, that's eight hours. So that's why I, I, that's the only reason I said twelve hours, is.
I mean, I can always plan to take the day she works off, if, you know, that's what.
Right.
You know, if I come in late, I usually pick a day someone's gonna be here.
Right, right, yeah.
Oh, well, always. And what, it's up to you guys.
Efficiency of both clerks equal?
No.
No. Okay, so are we doing it to be nice or are we doing it to be?
We are on TV and we can't even talk about it.
Okay.
I'm just looking at the budget.
That'd be halfway between the fourteen, your numbers are twelve.
Twelve.
Twelve, we're halfway almost.
Well, it's at, what's it at now, sixteen?
Sixteen something.
It's not halfway.
Twelve. No. A little under.
Well, ten hours, if we did ten, that's only two hours per week.
Okay, I'm looking at the ten hours, sorry.
If she was doing, uh, ten, but she did eight hours a week and use those extra two hours to cover when you're out sick, when you take a day off, or when you're going to a training, cause still, she might go to a training when and that would be, if we did ten, that's two hours times fifty-two weeks, so it's five hundred.
So ten, I did twelve.
I'm just wondering what the difference is.
Ten times fifty-two. Five hundred and twenty times nineteen sixty-five would be ten thousand two eighteen. Plus withholdings, but I can adjust those.
So how many extra hours is that? Over eight times fifty-two?
Two times fifty-two.
Eight times fifty-two, yeah, yeah, two times fifty-two.
Hundred and four.
Hundred and four, so that covers a lot of.
That's like three, three weeks.
Yeah. So.
That would work.
Let's do the ten hours, if. And that difference is what?
It should be ten thousand two eighteen. Page two. Ten thousand two eighteen. So be one O two for medical leave, um, no, that's not right. Fifty-one for medical leave. All right, let's try it one more time, ten two two. Seven eighty-one for withholdings.
Withhold then, Medicare, that one?
Yeah.
Like in Medicare.
Okay, probably now, right, for ten hours would be five hundred and twenty hours for the year. At nineteen sixty-five, exactly, that is eight hundred and thirty-two hours.
Yep.
What did you say, what did you say for withholding?
Seven eighty-one or seven eighty-two probably round up. Does that say it was just, um, six thousand anyway? Maybe six thousand, just good.
Walking back up to the top of the page here, on page two, mowing. Requested, oh, that's, um.
Contract stupid. Get one more year on that.
I guess it was thirteen, I was thinking it was the side mowing.
Seven degrees.
Four feet, yeah.
Can you shave your brand off now, huh?
Uh, not the mown.
Yeah. It doubled.
Yeah, yeah, from when Isaac did it to when.
It doubled.
And Steve was the, that's when Steve first came on. Some of the bids we got were way higher than that too, it was the lowest.
So can you take the brand off or not?
We can't.
It's gonna change.
It's what I was asking.
Oh, that one's seven?
I really wasn't for a straight across the board raises this year, I just think we gotta tighten the belt as much as we can. I think the election clerk supply is still there, uh, I don't know, but we just adjusted, uh, deputy clerk rate so that they were equal pages and.
So the Missut B. Toptikum, the recently lost repair of town hall. I scratched off seven thousand, we put four thousand from the other night.
From, probably a minute instead of refinishing.
Page six, here.
Four, four thousand.
Yeah, she put it in the new revised one.
Yep.
And then the memorial.
Oh, so.
I moved that to the reserves, cause she wants it in a reserve.
Okay.
Sorry.
So the request was thirty-seven eighty-five in reserve now.
Yep.
And she's requesting two, five grand for the new monument and the two hundred and fifty year centennial.
Three, three for the monument and five for the, yeah.
In addition to the thirty-seven eighty-five that's already in reserve?
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Cool, that's crazy.
Yep.
There's a, it's not a very good picture, but there's a picture in your request of what she has planned with Collette's.
I saw that. Alright, can we squeeze a little bit there? Can we meet in the middle?
Absolutely.
When we sat down the other day, we did not have the stats that the mill rate was gonna go from nineteen to twenty-six if we approved everything. So coming in here tonight was like, we, we really need to cinch stuff.
Yeah.
Um.
Definitely.
So.
We do have our fine balance policy that we, I read again, and now it registers.
But in the event that, you know what? That's, that's great until you need it.
Right. If we put it all to reduce taxes, we're not gonna have anything next year when.
Exactly. So. And then the event, in the event that something catastrophic happened, you, you need that money. Um, yeah.
I agree.
Cut it in half.
Um, so.
I mean, her request is gonna be in the warrant article, but you can recommend what you think I need.
Sure, yeah. So eight grand, you're, what are you saying? Cut that in half to four? Between the memorial and the sub and the centennial? Yeah, I bet that's an eight grand request. If we cut that, cut that in half.
I'm thinking very similar, two grand for the memorial to go into her reserve.
Okay.
And uh two grand for next year's centennial. She used to pay planning fees or whatever she wants to.
And that's a, that's a really good leg up.
Two and two.
Two and two. What do you guys think?
Two.
I just.
Two for the memorial and two instead of the others.
Yeah, for the centennial celebration, right. There'll be other groups that will step up and wanna do stuff, and they're not gonna have a budget, do you know what I mean? They're gonna come up with how the, whether it's a parade or whatever, and.
Me too.
Sorry, Elaine. Well, it's still up to the voters, so.
Right, right, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Now, in your reserves and the new, in the budget worksheet that's in your book, I went from your surveys and I put numbers in from there.
Yeah, this is at the back of my, um.
Yes. I don't know where she's at on our reserves, but the new one, I, I put the reserves towards the end of the book.
Okay.
Like the monument and the celebration.
February twenty twenty-five.
It's on page seventeen.
I know, we're jumping all over the place. But it's not, is it in the budget? Is it in the budget worksheet?
Yeah, seventeen.
You're on page seventeen?
Mm-hmm.
On page sixteen.
Oops, maybe you've got shortchanged.
I don't have a seventeen.
I just have a six. I must have ran out of paper.
Do you wanna make copy?
No, I can do it. I've got a computer.
Okay, so.
But um, I use, I got these numbers from your little surveys you filled out.
Yeah, yeah.
Every people put different things, but it was looking like we might not wanna do some of them.
Okay, so you got two thousand and five. So we knock it for two and two.
Yeah.
Two and two. Okay.
So as we look at that, and we've got capital outlay reserve for the copier.
Yeah, don't take that.
No, that's what I mean, we can't, because if we need it, you gotta have it.
Yeah.
Without renting? If, if we needed a new copier.
I'm, I'm assuming that we would look at leasing versus buying.
We can do the cheapest option in the long run for the year, whichever.
When it, when and if it happens, when this one dies.
Yeah.
I don't know. Because we had that in the last year, didn't spend it.
No, we didn't. You guys took it out because the budget went up, I mean, would have gone up.
Yeah. Equipment reserve, the forty thousand, would you remind me what that's for?
It was on one of your surveys, you just, and then just put it in there.
I think it was for matching grant funds for. No, that's equipment, so I don't know.
Somebody put capital, twenty grand for capital outlay, forty grand for equipment reserve, fifty for revow, twenty-five for road reserve, fifty to a hundred for paving reserve, but I don't think we can do all that.
I don't think so either, no. You have to do the evaluation, so.
Oh, Mike didn't get back to me, he's, he pretty much said he's gonna talk to his brother John, the owner, to figure out a timeframe and a price of doing the across-the-board increase, but like I said, it's not gonna affect a whole lot for this year, except for the homestead.
Mm-hmm, right. I know, but a lot of us have homestead.
But you're gonna pay for him twenty-something thousand to do that, which will go in the budget, whoa, you know, it.
Yeah, I understand. Well, we need to make, make tough decisions, and the state's pushing us into doing a re-eval soon.
Well, they just wanna know what we're gonna do in the future, soon, soon future. Not right now.
We knew that twenty twenty-eight, we were gonna do the, the re-evaluation.
When we revow, he'd go up every time, every, say we eval every five years.
I'm sure.
It might be would be cheaper to do it sooner than later.
Oh, we don't have, um, it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do a revow, and he has to put it, have the time to do it, takes months.
Well, we talked about getting him booked for twenty-eight already, didn't we?
Yeah.
And now we're saving like crazy for that, I thought.
Uh, we have, what, thirty-eight thousand or something, don't we? Only put two in last year, because the budget was gonna go up.
Mm-hmm, right, yeah.
Revow, we have thirty-six plus the two that's gonna go in this year, thirty-eight thousand. So we need another hundred and twenty thousand.
By twenty twenty-eight.
I mean, unless the state says.
Right.
We need it sooner, but we're not gonna schedule anybody before then anyway.
We can still say, oh yeah, we're scheduled, but this is when he can see us, because he's already, as he said, he was already picked up.
So capital outlay reserve. You guys are on seventeen.
Yeah.
So, alright, if we're looking at that, there'll be some big numbers we can cut. Those recommended twenty grand, what do you guys think? In twenty-three, it was only twenty-five hundred dollars.
What's that for?
Capital outlay. The actual was twenty-five hundred dollars.
Right, but this is specific for the copier.
Okay.
The capital outlay, if you go down to equipment reserve, I'm not sure what that forty thousand's for.
Somebody put it on their survey.
Okay, it was on there.
Um, no, on the surveys that I had you fill out a couple months ago, and so, somebody wrote in forty thousand with no explanation. We have nineteen thousand in, oh, cap. Which one are you talking about, equipment?
Yeah.
We have nineteen thousand in there now, someone requested that we add another forty thousand. Someone else said no.
So ax that.
Ax it, ax it.
Ax the forty grand.
Yeah.
Okay. The capital outlay reserve, um, you said that is total copies, obviously.
We can cut it again, but I'm gonna need one someday.
So what, what's the total price? What's the?
I think it was forty-six hundred to buy mine, but that was a year, over a year ago.
Okay, and if we lease one? We don't know.
Um, did I put it in here?
You can only lease it for a gap year.
How long do they last? Last quite a while, I think. How long does this one need?
Um, see if I have it on my list.
You can at least per year, like a gap year, and then get the budget under control, and then budget for a, a new copier.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
You're just looking for just a, just a gap filler.
Yeah, I see what you mean.
Copier two thousand sixteen, right when I left. Eight years.
Okay, that's, that's this one here.
Seven, nine, nine years, yeah. And we can, we, we get free maintenance on it, because we pay for it every year, it's not free, but.
Right.
It's just that the parts aren't gonna be available forever, he said. He just replaced the whole guts in front on the top there, because it broke a few months ago.
Where we're cinching so much, I'm just thinking if we budgeted for a lease, if we need one, just per year. And then budget following year to buy a new one. By then.
There's one that's going to crack it.
By then, school and county should be settled.
Right.
Yeah.
And then have a more solid.
That's never ending though, whoo, it's cool.
I can't wait to see if they come up with figures if we pulled out.
I don't remember where my copier is. Oh, bring her.
What is the average in
coffee reserve?
Lease.
Monthly lease investment. Oh, it has to be thirty-six months, forty-eight months, or sixty months for a lease.
So you're bound for three years.
Hmm.
And what is it for three years?
It is one fifty-four fifty-six plus thirty-eight twenty-five per month. Plus we need the fax service, I don't know how much that is. So we added that to it. And to purchase one, it's forty-nine oh six plus about five hundred for maintenance a year. Which maintenance is under a different.
Category.
Line, yeah.
Rubbed it off like a hundred and fifty a month? At least.
No, it's one fifty-four plus thirty-eight.
Oh.
Like two hundred a month. Plus the fax service, I don't know how much that is, because we added that afterwards. I mean, there's a special software they gotta put in it or something.
Would you gamble and just hope this one goes in the lead?
Right. Let's put half the money in.
Yeah, would you go half? Why don't we go instead of sixty-five hundred, why don't we go to four thousand?
Yep, that would be safe.
We hope the copier keeps going.
Right.
Not keep chugging already. We're here, where it's at fifty-five hundred on page seventeen, go to four thousand.
This is copier. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we have, I think, seven thousand in that account now.
We have seven in there already.
I think so, but.
Because I'm working out of the book.
Yeah, seventy-eight, but that's for any purchase of anything that lasts, has a life of over five years, is it? Yeah, at least five years.
I'd go with that, four thousand.
Alright, I changed everything around. Reserves are all in the reserves now.
Copier. So we changing that to four thousand.
Okay.
Next one, road reserve.
It's up to you guys, but I was gonna, remember I said I talked to the auditor and MMA legal about the road reserve balance moving to the re the road expense balance moving to the road, summer road reserve account at the end of the year?
So if any money left, it goes there.
Yeah. Well, auditor said it has to be voted on each year, so if you want, I can put two articles in, one for this year balance to go into the reserve, and then one for the next year also, or I can leave them out, it's up to you. If they don't go to the reserve, they'll go to the general fund. Usually, they're all spent right down to the last dollar anyway, but, um, I don't know about this year.
General fund or reserve?
Reserve, it can be used without town meeting approval, because it's sitting there. But we'd still need your approval.
Versus fund balance.
Hmm. Just let me know.
You have more flexibility with the fund balance.
Yeah, we can't spend fund balance without town meeting. If it goes into the reserve, you three can decide to spend it on roads. The reserves are, once they're created at town meeting, you guys have authority to have a spend them.
I think the voters should probably have a say in, in that. They would have more say if it went back in the fund.
Yeah, it would be a warrant article if you want me to include those.
Yeah, we want them to have as much say as they want.
Okay. So, unless we have in there right now. The general fund's weird because.
It's what?
It's odd, because I have the totals from prior year, and all the expenses and revenue don't touch the total, they see in the expense count and the revenue account, so it doesn't show an accurate total. So I have to think. But it shows, um, right now only thirty-six hundred dollars.
Did the FEMA money we just got, did that go into a road reserve?
No, that went into the special revenue FEMA reserve. Yes, that's not right. I gotta look at that, because that's not right.
I would put that back in the general fund.
What, the summer roads?
Yep.
Instead of the two articles?
And then we take a lot then vote to find the two articles again.
I mean, it would be for current year, whatever's left over to put into the summer road reserve, and then the next fiscal year.
Or any leftover summer road funds go into, back to the general fund, till.
I do, I think you have more flexibility in the general fund, especially if you can put it on taxes or whatever. If it's on roads, you have to use it for roads.
Yeah.
You have a whole more options if you put it in general fund, it's like a no-brainer. If it's not used.
You just can't use it without town meeting approval.
Right.
I'm more good with that.
That makes no sense.
Because right now, it, it says suggested, slutman recommend twenty-five thousand, and there's nothing under requested, I'm just. Um.
No, that's from your surveys.
You already split it?
I'm just, uh.
There's twenty-three grand in there now.
In the summer roads?
Mm-hmm. In the, in the summer road reserve.
Make it down to ten. Make it down to ten.
Little fifteen, go to. Three year.
And how would that be spent, just on anything that's on a road save or road issue, besides the regular summer budget?
I'm trying to figure out why we need an additional twenty-five grand on top of the entire summer road budget request. Why do we have to have that above and beyond the summer requested? That doesn't make any sense to me.
Do that for years, you think?
Hmm, I don't think, I don't think so, I listed all the reserves. Well, look at your budget. Look at prior year across, did we raise anything, oh, you got my last pages. Road reserve, we've never put anything in there to, from raised taxes. So I'm gonna take that out.
Yeah, I'd like to.
Especially this year.
Yep.
The next one is the the RET committee wanted to create a fund, I mean, a reserve so that they can accept donations, and that way they'll be able to go into the reserve, and they can spend from the reserve.
Do they have to have a thousand to set up a reserve?
That's what they asked for, they wanted money for supplies for their events. So they can buy food and whatever they need for the events.
Okay.
They're willing to do all these fundraisers.
So we put a hundred thousand in last year for paving reserves, we won't put anything in this year?
How is? I don't stand this part, I'm just leaning out. Okay, will that be for Pratt Hill? Or whatever, what's what's?
The hundred thousand, he's got a hundred thousand in it right now for paving, specific for paving. And we thought it would be for Pratt Hill when we did it last year.
But that's up to you three to decide at a meeting, how that's spent.
Right.
Or we've already talked.
But our thoughts, use the time, yeah. And it's gonna be money that FEMA's asked for some paving money to.
He asked for two hundred thousand, I think you guys changed it to, you recommended one, because we had a hundred.
So cemetery's reserve is, did um did the cemetery department ask us for?
No, these are all numbers from your surveys that I had you fill out.
We're not gonna put anything in it. Yep, they have a hundred that we put in last year. Um, I think that at the time, I was, I was thinking that we um, that they might need some monuments that need people bought, they've had a very donor donate, which is really great.
They do have some money.
But I think they have some money, they didn't ask for it.
They have um, they have two accounts, a cemetery savings and a cemetery reserve or somewhere. Cemetery savings has five thousand one eighty-eight, cemetery reserve has four hundred and ninety-six. So, change that?
I'd say, it seemed like they're staple.
Leave it at?
I don't know, I was gonna take it right up, oh, oh, oh. Does it got, I wanted to tap into that one. Yep. And that was just, I put in next, I was thinking we put the blindstones and volunteer and move in the donor.
Right.
The renovation, what do we have, did you say we have thirty-seven?
Thirty-eight.
And this would be twenty-six. I did, we have to put fifty in.
Leave it at the fifty.
Okay. So you've cut about twelve thousand off of the requested so far?
Drop thousand.
Oh, if this is adding up, right, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you're wrong, I'm wrong. That's municipal only. Let me see. So we're forty-two thousand?
Cut the wages.
Yep.
The wages are the, we're on the reserves, page seventeen.
I know, but what if the wages are, I would like to cut that.
Trying to figure out where we just were.
Was it three?
I'm not saying.
What's wages you cutting over there, yours?
Yeah, yeah. Definitely clerks, hours of wages.
Page two?
Yeah. Okay. So. So if you go to page six, we talked about the, the we are decided under the garage, and then also the school building. Oh, sorry, yeah.
So, while you brought up garage, I had somebody look at the garage leak, the chimney is junk, they suggested knocking off the top of the chimney and sealing it with metal roofing, and I got one estimate. Someone told me four or five hundred, the other ones like a thousand. But I don't have the first one on paper. I'm trying to get the maintenance guy to agree to do it.
Trying to get the maintenance guy what?
To do it. Just have to find a piece of metal that fits. Seeing, you know, pattern. I don't know, I was actually talking to my daughter.
Rusty, I said our own got a roof, so.
Yeah, my daughter said she didn't knock it off, I said, don't tell me. Anyway, but we have nothing in the budget for garage this year for some reason, so we might wanna.
Something we're gonna wanna put something in it.
We have a thousand, is that what you have? You guys recommended a thousand for next year so far. That was you, that was me.
Because we also have, we have to have paint too. But I think we wanna wait to fix that garage.
Just gotta come up with the money. And he said four, I got you, I don't have that on paper.
Pretty reliable, I don't think.
Maybe, I was gonna try to get the maintenance guy to do it first, even cheaper, but. I don't, I don't know.
The type of old bag it shows, they obviously on Facebook.
Yeah, break a leg that way.
Aluminum, no. Aluminum, it's not yet ready. All right, we'll stay focused on this year's upcoming budget.
For garage, we've been at a thousand or what?
I think we've been at a thousand, but we're gonna have to figure out how to pay for that. We still have to paint, we got window sills, we've got plasticing and stuff. That we need to secure. Thousand, we'll pay. Didn't we just figure out, because of labor, I know I just did a pricing on that, it's like twenty-four dollars a bucket. And you say it's gonna be. Yep.
Twenty-four dollars, twenty-four dollars for five gallons.
Didn't he say ten gallons?
I looked five.
Oh, because maybe we could do at least one side. So that's two forty, without any uh, labor.
Four thousand.
That's good, so I think a thousand's good. We can um we can lower the schoolhouse paint, and leave it at five hundred versus a thousand. Remember to tell her when she comes in. Unless if we know at least when.
You go lower to what?
Five hundred. Unless I have the people that would help, you're called here, Rusty, I would. Yeah. So I do something wrong.
Did I miss anything?
Yeah.
Maintenance to the school building, you drop it to five hundred.
The garage, the garage is at a thousand.
All right.
School's at five hundred, salt shares at a thousand.
Okay.
Cemetery flags, you do it five hundred?
I think we have to. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I need a big flag, and we just barely get by every year with the two hundred and fifty dollars.
Yeah. Okay, but summer, that door, the fire expenses.
Would be but, very first line, five.
Wait, five.
So we, I wish I knew when we're gonna get the rest of the FEMA money, because we have two hundred thousand that we already spent that we could use.
I know, I know. Yep. But you can't just, just can't go and spend it if we don't have it yet.
Right.
On the backs of the taxpayer. And they love a town meeting, we can have one and say, we got this money, are you ready to spend it? To do, where do we put it?
It wouldn't need a town meeting.
Because it would go in the FEMA reserve.
It would be up to you guys.
Okay. I hope it's coming.
It's coming, but I don't know when.
Took the same in North Carolina too, and I haven't gotten anything. Be sad.
Rest of this, we can't do much, right? Trash.
Right.
No. Fire. Just cross out the trash bins, recycle bins, yeah.
Even so, if you could, if someone like Kathleen Terrio, if we knew where we could buy the blue bins, and she could cut stickers, does she have that?
Well, I think I had a, it wasn't that much cheaper for the plain ones.
Yeah, I think they're pretty pricey no matter what.
So people buy their own.
Who mows your old dump, is that?
It used to be Bragg Masonry, but last year it was Jeremy Johnson. The summer is supposed to notify us when they change the contract, which you had to ask for it after the fact.
Am I pushing the table? No, I'm rolling.
At some point, you'll have to tell me what, which of the social services you would recommend. And we can take more from fund balance. I only put, I only figured in thirty thousand, which is the normal amount we take out excess revenue, you know, to reduce taxes. We can decide that later, I guess, see what the budget committee says. So with your request so far, you dropped. With your cuts so far, you dropped like, instead of twenty-six, three, it's twenty-six even for a mil rate?
Even with all the stuff we cut out of the reserve?
Mm-hmm.
Because it's. I know, it's because of.
It's a hundred and, hundred and twenty-one, let me double check to make sure. It was twenty-six, three, six, three. And now it's twenty-six, zero, one.
You're cutting.
Yep.
A hundred and twenty-one thousand.
Is what we've cut?
Per, no, per mil.
We've cut more than.
So you have to cut a hundred and twenty-one thousand to make it drop to twenty-five.
And we just dropped almost a hundred and twenty-five thousand, which went from twenty-six something to twenty-six. So are you on page eight?
I am.
Okay. Um, I'm just thinking, I know a lot of these roads have got went from like a budget of five hundred to a thousand, if we could put it back to five hundred. I don't know what needs to be done on Adams Road. We improved a thousand dollars last year.
Grading, adding gravel, probably mostly to the dirt roads, that's what it's gonna be.
According to the road community, they need a little bit more than that. These dirt roads need some loving.
Immediately.
All right, I'm good with that.
Would you do so?
Um, I just suggested that the ones that we're sitting at five hundred, that we keep at five hundred versus going up to a thousand.
So go road by road.
Okay.
Adams Road, five hundred.
It's at the very top of paging.
Yep, yep.
Next road is Bear Mountain Road. Five hundred.
Yeah, next one's Berry Road, it says he needs shoulder work, I think, water.
I don't know, what's the trouble with Berry Road?
I don't know, it says here that he's putting down sho- shoulder work.
Maybe that is, that might be.
At the end of.
That might be. That might be, uh. No, that might be bringing the gravel up even with the edges of the road, maybe in places.
Actually, there is some, when you come down past the winery, it's washed right away on one side, and people's mailbox keeps getting tipped over because.
So it might be what it is, bringing the gravel up even with the road.
Which I know he planned on doing that last year, but he didn't.
You wanna go fifteen or not?
Okay. And bring Camp Road back down to five hundred.
Yep.
Is Camp Road all tar now?
Yep.
Yeah. I don't know what he's doing.
What would she, what would she have to do for maintenance? Or repair?
It would be that, he'd be pulling the gravel up to the tar.
Right, next.
Here, Kerry Hills, already five hundred, so we'll leave it.
Church.
Church Street.
A lot of people complaining about Church Street, that one section.
No, it is so bad, I was surprised someone would see a thousand on here.
Leave it for that?
He's not gonna repair that section for us.
No.
No people will.
And he had ten thousand in there for twenty-twenty-five, and he has spent seven-eighty.
That seven-eighty, I think, was, uh, down by the cemetery.
Right.
Where we put.
Yeah, the shoulder work. Yeah. Maybe he should be, I mean, he's got nine thousand left in there for this year.
Is it still in there?
Yeah, well, we have a balance of seventy-seven thousand. I think it was sixty-something, wasn't it?
I thought you told us the other day, it was like seventy-one or seventy-four thousand.
Where my report is.
Is Church worse than that?
No. But it's bad.
This is rough with the, with the, one section going down to the flat. Turn around, you can dig up eventually.
Up, we're pretty good anyway.
Do you know what I mean by the flat? The top of the hill, one down, two you get, probably pine shores.
And you can tell it is rocking and coming up.
We're gonna give it to you at a thousand dollars, maybe that's the next road, I don't know.
Sixty-six, four ninety-four, sorry.
Sixty-six, four ninety-four.
Dustin Summer Roads.
Probably gonna need that for Pratt.
I paid the interest on the road bond, that's probably.
That's where the difference is. Yeah.
Sixty-six what?
Four ninety-four, that's what left, is left for till June.
Yep.
A thousand dollars isn't, isn't gonna do nothing.
They're gonna need more patching. Leave it in there.
You wanna leave that?
Yeah.
Okay. Camera, camera, road.
Leave it at five hundred.
They can, they just did a ton of work on that, so turn that down to five hundred.
Yeah.
Darrington, five grand.
Fifteen grand.
Oh, no.
Ten. Yeah, let's do ten.
Ten total.
I'd do half of the fifteen. Girls, we gotta cut some numbers. We're gonna have to get a little creative here.
If we get the FEMA money, a ton of it is for Darrington, we're washouts, I don't know what section.
But if we don't, uh, but if we don't and we're leaving. I don't wanna throw my eggs in that basket.
All right.
So.
Half, seven, five hundred. And hopefully they get the FEMA money.
Okay, so. What's it, what about this rented equipment?
Where's that?
Unless you line it up above the five.
There's nothing in that budget.
Right. Get the summer road material, road material. We're gonna make them both at what?
I just, instead of five, instead of five and ten, seventy-five altogether.
No.
For the road, yeah. That's, that's meeting in there.
Yeah.
Davenport.
That one is bad.
And is Davenport one of the FEMA roads too?
I don't know which section.
It would be down and at the bottom of the hill.
I don't know which section he's budgeting for, if it's the same or different. Looks like he wants gravel, but that's.
That's where, that's where, that's where, where the washout was, was left the gravel in.
So the FEMA money, if we got it, we cover this?
See, at the bottom of the hill. It's big.
Can we, can we zero that output FEMA, knowing that we wanna allocate FEMA money to pay for that?
Can it wait? What if it's a year, can it wait till that gravel work?
Oh, I don't know. I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna cut it in half and, and then see what the budget committee.
Okay.
Can I always go back and change these?
And you know what, they're just gonna give us some time light, so you'll know. That will be Ask Ben. If you don't know if it's the same section or not.
Godding, five grand.
You go to Perry Hill?
We're gonna keep it at five, yeah.
Green Acres Road, fifty grand for overlay. Now, Godding Road.
It only costs, it costs fifty-five to, or around fifty to tar it the first layer.
Yeah, this is supposed to be just an overlay.
Yeah, this is an overlay.
Is that cheaper or the same? I don't know.
Um, cheaper, so.
Can agree.
But we got a good deal because he was already in that area.
Right. So all I'm thinking is, if we were to budget out overlay, the road that gets the most usage.
Would be Perry Road.
Is Perry Road.
And plus Church Street never got their overlay, I asked him about that. It's been years.
But why would Green Acres Road get?
Because it's new tar and wants to preserve it.
But if we had to decide on which month to do overlay this year, plus paving Perry Road. I would say, I mean, paving Pratt Hill, I would go with Perry Road.
Probably a lot longer.
Green Acres. Because he, he put in there, I think, the overlay for Perry Road.
Yeah, we have Perry Road in.
Yeah, Perry Road's a hundred, hundred thousand.
I, I would take that off. If they have to prioritize here.
So, uh, Green Acres, bring it down to five hundred?
Yep.
All right, Gurnee Hill, like, we've gotta fix that culvert that's popped up.
Yep.
You drive it right over the. What, what do you think that would cost, Kathy? Does that look like a thousand dollars gonna do it?
Probably.
Does it need to be?
Our culvert, our culverts will be covered, I'm trying to get him to buy them before April.
Yeah, it goes up.
Out of the ARPA.
Yeah. We have a list that we were working on prior to that.
I have an estimate, we just have to actually.
Do it. Gotcha. Can we reuse that culvert? It has to be replaced.
It ought to be replaced. It's a tin metal one.
Okay. We still have a few up on the, uh. And that's a low, uh, low travel road, could we use a smaller one there?
Probably.
Probably. So what do you think it would cost to put it in? Three thousand?
That's what I was thinking.
What'd you tell us?
Yeah, twenty-five to three, putting one in.
Okay. Okay. Let's do twenty-five hundred, put it, and put new culvert. We have those culverts that are a little small above, and that might work just fine for that road, it's low, low, uh, low travel.
I bet none of you guys have.
Okay, we got Lavender Pond Road, everything else is five hundred. Lavender Pond Road.
Nope, five hundred. I know.
But Lavender Pond?
Yeah.
He wanted gravel there.
Five hundred, four forty. Where's Mahoney? Gravel. Five hundred.
Now, now, the Foy Road, that needs to be brought up.
Should we put?
So it's, it's, it's got a wicked little spot right there, before you get to her house. Bring it out. Always floods. Who's, where is this? The Foy Road.
Right.
From Lavender Pond Road. And it always floods right across there.
So you think that's what the two thousand was for, to put in the ground?
I imagine, yeah. That was really, that was really bad.
You're on Mahoney?
No.
Have you got it too?
Can it wait? For the amount of flooding, it's, that's a temporary. Can it, can it wait one more?
Pretty sure he had to bring the family, isn't that the one he had to bring them in a dump truck to get to their house because it was so deep?
One ton.
Is it a culvert issue or gravel issue?
Oh, bloody.
He put two thousand in, so what would?
I think it's mostly.
Yeah, no, no.
Issue.
Yeah, so no.
Fifteen.
Fifteen hundred? I'm gonna put flooding here, so.
For the course of luck.
Yeah. And Mahoney Road, he's got five thousand in for gravel, five hundred.
I can read.
Mahoney Road.
We just did the, the worst part of it, at least to keep the, uh. I went and checked on it the other day, to see how it was doing with the, how your rain looked really good.
So the ripples.
Yeah, ripples, yeah.
Moses Young, five hundred.
While you're on Moses Young, I think the road, it's discontinued to summer and winter, winter maintenance, but we have a cemetery not too far up there. I guess the road's pretty bad, so we might, this year, wanna put a little bit in there.
I agree, because there is like some huge, last time you were to do things, huge crevasses, water's taking it down, and you're not gonna be able to even get up there, that's. So I, I think we should keep at the two hundred.
I mean, that would have to be done before he goes up in Moses, in current year, but. To fix that little section, discontinued section to the cemetery.
Between the house and the cemetery.
Yeah. But if he had to bring it up, folks would get again.
But they had, put in, they already spent four fifty out of the five hundred that was in there for last budget, this year's budget.
What's wrong with Old State one forty? They walked that road, that doesn't look like there's anything wrong with it.
There is one place, what, first, what did you put on Moses Young?
We kept it, she lasted.
Two thousand.
Excuse me.
I know there's one place, a lady keeps calling near the bridge, that there's a hole, a wa, the culvert is, or the road's washing out because of the culvert or something. I don't know if that's the problem, he's.
Right there between Bob's house and Kerry Hill.
Um, on, I don't know, wherever the bridge is.
Yeah, sure, yeah. Fifteen, you want to do? Split it?
How about two thousand, might as well fill it and patch it.
I'd like to see it.
Would be one fifteen, probably.
That huge mess on Mahoney was two. The, the bridge on Old State one forty isn't nearly as big a job as what was on Mahoney.
He just tarred it though, I don't, I haven't been down there, so I don't know.
Mahoney, well, that one, that culvert shouldn't be changed.
Right, but for the sake of budget, that'll get us several years being reinforced by cop.
But this one might be different, this one is a, it's not a culvert, it is a, I think it's a cement.
Is it in the ditch, or is it, oh, tarred over, or?
Yeah, it's been tarred over, yes.
All right, cut it in half for now.
Yeah, I was gonna do two thousand.
Two, two thousand it is.
So Perry Road, I just think that has more travel than.
Green Acres?
Green Acres.
All day long.
So if we're gonna do an overlay to preserve the road, I would do that.
No, it can't, it can't wait, huh?
Nope. It's already started to, uh. The middle was down where he wanted it, it was more peak, but now it's come down, which is what he wanted.
Pine Shores, I don't know what's wrong with that.
Nothing.
Five hundred, no, keep it.
Pratt Hill. We cut that down to a hundred because it was covered in paving.
Yep.
So it's just two hundred thousand dollars to finish Pratt. The hundreds.
Because that's, that doesn't count what we're doing this spring, so I don't think we're gonna need two hundred thousand.
All right, so we cut it down at the last workshop from two hundred to a hundred.
Yep.
And that doesn't include the hundred that's in paving.
Is that just in paving, or is it?
That's what I'm asking.
Is that?
Oh, that could have been just.
Is that just a paving, or is it to get it ready to be paved?
I think it's everything, two hundred thousand?
Everything.
I'm pretty sure.
Yep. So, but we have the hundred thousand in paving, that's why it's a.
Right, that's why we took the hundred off, so.
We have culverts in ARPA.
Yep. And we have money this spring still.
Sixty-seventh, sixty-sixth.
Sixty-six.
Yeah, sixty-six, right?
Sixty-six.
But we might do a little bit on Moses Young to the cemetery.
Add another forty. Sixty-six. I'm just thinking, let's leave it out there, we'll come back. Let's leave it out there, and we come back and you say your lowest one's a hundred. And the rest are up.
I'm trying to think. Well, if we spend fifty thousand this, this May, and then. We have the hundred thousand paving in reserve, how much more over fifty thousand we gonna need? To finish Pratt Hill?
You lose sixty-six. I'm gonna go to paving.
Put you down to pointy-two-five-three-five. Good job.
So if we put, just hand me out for a second, if we were to spend fifty thousand this spring out of our current budget. Okay? And if that job could go, then we do paving in next year, the hundred thousand plus anything that goes over the fifty, so. I mean, what if we put like?
Are you talking like sixty-six? Sixty-six, what we got left over?
Right, but I think Moses Young is gonna need some.
Just a little.
And, so that's why I said if fif- if they get fifty thousand from the sixty-six went to Pratt Hill.
Might need some grading too.
Plus another fifty out of this year's budget.
That's what I'm thinking. And we have a hundred, then we have a hundred thousand in paving.
Yes, but, yeah.
She putting it down to fifty?
Right. Because we have a hundred thousand in paving, we put fifty thousand in. Come, this spring, we could be using. The sixty-six, but I think probably fifty, and Bim's got some other work he's gonna wanna be doing. Some left shoulder work and stuff that he didn't, didn't get to do last fall. Remember Moses Young, because people are gonna wanna go to that cemetery and you can't get through there.
So it's a, that's a discontinued road, right? And so if someone builds. Up above cemetery, you can't be like.
We're not doing that.
No.
Job and.
No. But just because there's a cemetery there.
We gotta be able to.
The mowing guy has to get.
Yes, we have to get the cemetery, we have to keep that, so it's.
Yep.
Passable.
Passable, just because there's cemetery, but say if someone wants to build up beyond there, we've got it. We've got it right in the books, so that.
They would have to do the roads.
Right, we're not liable to.
Right.
Do any more maintenance and shit.
Right.
Okay. Just make sure we did that.
Okay, Record Hill Road. Yeah, yeah, about five hundred.
You keeping a thousand in Record Hill?
Nope.
Nope.
Five hundred.
Did he get to do that shoulder work last year on Stetson?
I think he did. I thought we got a bill for that.
He only spent two hundred and forty dollars last year, current year.
On Stetson?
Uh-huh.
That don't sound like much.
I thought it was more than that. I thought, we're not sure we approved a check for Stetson road work, because I was surprised that it needed work.
Let me double check.
Shoulders need to be brought up, but I don't think.
Was it Maitney Farms, do you remember?
Yep.
I can't spell it.
I didn't think he got to that, but it was late in fall.
Uh, what number is? Fifty-three.
Do you wanna do a brand? It's half.
Yeah, let me think.
So I'm going. Five hundred.
From ten thousand? Says it needs some gravel.
Ten thousand dollars worth?
Let me Google if, uh. Twenty-five.
How about thirty-five hundred? Or twenty-five hundred? That's a quarter. There's only, there's only, what's all your urgency with Swan Pond Road, that's the old dump room.
Yeah, there's, uh, there's a half a dozen golden selling there.
I think there's only two, two people that live there year round that I know of.
Yeah, that's, that's.
One at the beginning, so three.
Well, he budgeted six grand, he spent five hundred sixty-three. Now he's budgeted ten grand, so. Twenty-five hundred, three thousand? Three thousand.
So twenty, yeah, twenty-three grand went into that road last year.
Into what road?
Swan Pond.
Yeah. Had a big washout.
That's one of those that just was gone.
Yep, gone.
And they got it passable.
That one was bad, and Gory Road was bad.
Town Farm Road.
Thompson Lane, keep it at five.
Town Farm, five thousand? Oh, why do we have five thousand in there?
In what?
Thompson Lane. I'll change that.
Nope. Okay, Town Farm, fifty. Needs so much work. Three sections.
What section is it?
He just said large project, large project, three sections.
That is a large project.
So we leave it? It's gonna go, it's in such bad shape now.
It is in bad shape.
Because if not, we're gonna have to, we're gonna lose it, end up paving the road with patch.
Do that, I'm good with that.
Leave it? Yeah.
Town Farm Road. Nothing's recommended.
Um, it's because Buckfield, we switch off every three years, Buckfield's maintaining it for summer maintenance now.
That's a great deal, can we do that with more roads?
Well, we have to plow it, though.
All right.
Tucker Road.
So we've already replaced, how many culverts did we replace on that road last year?
Three.
Tucker or?
Tucker.
Town Farm, I don't think we replaced any of them.
I don't think we replaced.
I got Tucker and Tucker.
We've only spent hundreds.
I think the complaints were they weren't cleaned.
Right, culverts were. Stable, just not cleaned out.
And that's throughout the town too. All right, I wondered with Tucker.
And it says, so just what you know, he put five thousand gravel, reset culvert, remove something. Rocks. Rock.
Okay. Keeping it? What do you guys think?
It's a highly traveled road.
Okay.
I think we should keep that.
We got.
Summer road miscellaneous wages.
For grading.
Yeah. Look at woodwork, there's nothing, budget, so.
So the greater, the equipment maintenance and the summer road wages. Are if we repair the grader. If it's rented. Whoever rents it. Supplies the driver.
I think with, with the, the budget, the school, the school budget and we can handle it. I would this year. The stakes are too high. We're still at a mill grade of twenty-five. No, I reckon it.
But he's gonna have to, I mean, we're gonna pay for the grading, no, either way, somehow.
The other way, we don't know how much.
It's up to you guys, just will, we'll take them both out or leave them both in? Unless the road commissioner drives the grader.
Which one are you on?
Wages.
Fourteen, I'm on fourteen. So in twenty-one, we spent sixteen grand, sixteen, almost sixteen-five in twenty-one for miscellaneous road wages. Nineteen thousand and change in twenty-two. Twenty-three, we spent thirteen-six in miscellaneous wages. Eight hundred in twenty-four. If we can't can it, I'd be going to go twenty-five hundred. Yeah.
We only need that if he runs the town grader, or we, the town rents a grader.
Right. Twenty-five hundred?
Yeah, sure, it's painful. But we're on year four.
What's the balance on the bond from the end, do you know?
Yep. I think we're in year four.
Yep.
Let me just minus what we paid. Try again.
Equipment maintenance, yeah.
Okay, we, we started out owing one million, five oh seven, one sixteen, forty-five with interest, we borrowed one point four million. We still owe. Where my column is, one million. Thirty-three thousand, five, five, seven.
Three hundred and fifty-seven, four years in. That hurts.
Yep. That was one of your duties when you first got back, wasn't it, to get that bond together?
Yeah. Town, special town meetings and, yeah, that was great.
I'm pretty sure we've never had any special town meetings till lately.
No, we have.
That was a big one.
Hold it, the request. We knock that down to zero. I don't have any, because that's gonna come out of ARPA.
Yep.
So what did we say about that, did we not want to, do we wanna try and take a year off from? Cut one, mowing?
Oh, why not?
Maybe just do, if there's intersections that are bad or something, but they can do that with a song, right? Or something.
Sickleback.
Yes.
Sickleback.
Oh, what do you think, that's a gamble. It's a lot of money, though, and actually it didn't get mowed till like October. So, and half the stuff was dead. By the time they mowed this patch.
It looked really bad afterwards, I mean, it looked really good, but it looked really like. Painted, you know?
It was, the stuff was half dead, I was driving around going, he didn't need to mow that up. That was a waste.
What if we were to mow every other year? Either every other year, or he mows half the town. Next, the following year, he mowed the other half of the town. Yep.
Where's the halfway point?
That's quicker.
Would it be the halfway point?
How many miles has he mowed?
Probably something. Every last mile.
No, he doesn't do state roads, right?
Right, no, he don't do state roads.
So that's probably six and.
Six and six, we take off twelve.
He won't do town line, but that's not very.
It'd be more than six and six. Eighteen, right?
I don't know how long two nineteen is.
Probably six to five, you know, six to eight.
Oh. It's three to, Stetson Road, another.
That's an idea, you know, because then.
It's an idea.
Not everything is waiting two years to be mowed. And, uh. He's been mowing a long time, so he would know, like. Which ones grow fast, and that's when he picks this year, he has half and then. More of the rural roads will go two years.
It's clutter, actually. State roads are the biggies of the.
He doesn't do those.
Great state roads.
So those are, those are taken care of, I like it.
Fifty degrees. Enough, we're all, we do half.
Yeah. You can agree to it.
So five. Awesome. Gas prices are going down, right?
Half the roads.
Did you leave equipment maintenance in there?
Yeah, I scratched it.
You scratched it?
Yep.
We have miscellaneous road repair.
I think we scratched that.
Did you?
Age fourteen.
No. Oh, no, here, at the bottom of that column. It's road repair, five thousand. Miscellaneous.
No. I think it was here.
That's probably, something went wrong in a road and that's where it came out of.
I'm wondering, when he like swept the town office parking lot, did it come out of there? Wondering what came out of there before. We spent something this year. Cold patch. We took out of there.
Just cold patch out of there?
Because he used it on several roads instead of dividing it up.
We gotta, we gotta sedge.
Can do three thousand?
That would be twenty-five hundred, I don't even want anything.
Twenty-five?
Twenty-five?
Yeah.
So we're down to point two, four, five.
Plowing, can't hang up in the belt?
He.
What's miscellaneous plow cost?
For the, um, tractor or bucket loader to go clean out culverts or whatever.
Around the insections.
I wonder why parking areas.
Oh, no, no, fifteen hundred is for the parking areas and then.
How come that doesn't get, I see you plowing all the time.
Yeah. I stayed here all day Monday till eight o'clock at night, never touched nothing. I had to. Get my, uh. Car or something.
I, I, I would can that parking area.
Oh.
He won't do it at all.
Well, he doesn't now, you do.
No, I don't do it all the time.
Not all the time, most of the time, anytime I've gone by.
My plows on, I'll do it.
I think it's in the contract. So I don't think we can get rid of it.
Yeah, I think it is too.
Show me the contract, I haven't even saw the eyes on that contract.
I put it in here, whoops. Plow con, yeah, it's written in our budget book.
Right?
Let me find a page.
Request. Request. Yeah, it's for the beverage bed, too.
Yeah, well, that's not that either. Not this last storm.
Was that?
Wasn't done this last storm. But it wasn't, it didn't last long. Or won't last long. I opened your book to the page. Easy.
Sorry, I saw an elder advocacy. We just want to have that.
Oh, no, really?
Great. I'm like, I said, you don't put her in the car, call an ambulance.
Oh, just had a fall?
Yeah. Yeah, she just fell down, caught up the stairs where it turns and... She's in her, like, mid to late eighties, so eighty-six. Sorry.
Sorry.
So where are we now?
She's looking over the, with the contract. So it's pasted and penciled in here. At the bottom, fifteen hundred dollars in the contract for town parking lots, et cetera. The beverage bed. Including school.
Where's the money we pay you when you come and clean up when they don't plow or whatever?
We just talked about that.
I'm serious, she's bought a whole bunch of shares.
It's a freebie.
I just said I sat here all day Monday till 8:00 PM, never touched this park. No one.
This last one?
Mm-hmm.
Do you remember how it came getting mowed? It was greasy.
Oh, yeah. Yep. Slushy, raining.
And two cars could not get up the hill.
Oh, no.
And so someone's trying to back up. The other one's stuck there. Here comes this big truck, and I'm coming around.
In the paint going around a mid-stop.
I had to. So I slowed right down, and then, you know, streaky mountain road.
Yep.
So it backed in there, waited for the big truck to go by and stuff. And I'm like, am I gonna get enough speed to pass them? Because they obviously slowed down and then couldn't get up. So I just decided, went back down, and went all the way up West Paris in 1988. Sometimes I have to go to Auburn when you can't. There was two accidents the other morning on Stricken. Yesterday morning.
State of the art issue.
Nope. People drive too fast. Do, just need to slow down.
So plowing?
Yep.
Contract, there's a request for it to go up ten grand. Why don't we leave it at, why don't we leave it?
We can't.
Contracted.
Because it's contracted, that it will go up every year for the three-year contract. They put in a new rate for each one of the years.
Sands like that? No. I'm going through...
No, it's not.
No, on the sand?
I don't think so.
So if it goes up ten grand every year?
Yeah, right.
Yeah, I guess it's not, yeah. Then, going through my annual town reports, one year it leaked up like eighty grand. That was new contract year, I think.
Because that's a bid every three or five years. They have a two-year extension if the Sleutman agree.
Eighty grand in one year. Ten, ten, eighty, ten, ten, ten. That's, how do you justify eighty grand?
You put it out to bid. You take the lowest bid or best bid.
But the only one.
It's never been out to bid, though.
It's always out to bid, every...
Three, three years.
Who did the year jump up eighty grand?
Then, probably then.
Yeah. And then they start charging one year or two years.
And when he died. You see, when he died, he still had a year left or something. He'd been, took it for that same price for that year. Then it went back out the bin. After that term was up. How long has Manier been gone? He died sixteen. So not very long. Well, almost two years. Nine years this year.
I don't know about this. I don't know why he puts so much salt, because we've never spent that much, but I don't know. Oh, I'm sorry, sand.
You mean the four thousand yards?
Yeah.
The building holds thirty-two hundred, is it?
But I know we've always filled it at the end of the year, and it's probably... But we've never spent seventy-eight thousand.
Yeah. Didn't it usually be five thousand yards? And the extra was from if needed?
I know the price went up, but it just seems like an astronomical jump. It's been running from like forty... Last year, we didn't buy as much because we were trying to clear out the salt.
Well, also in twenty-five, we spent twenty-three thousand, and we still have eight hundred yards left.
No, that was what was approved. But we had an issue with the auditor, because she said, I gotta remember. If we fill it, we filled it in June of last year. It should come out of this year's budget, because it's for this year. There was something she did.
So the winter sand, that number's not, as of three-one, how much have we spent on sand?
None, but I think the auditor is going to make an adjustment for what we paid last year. Take it out of this year's. Because that's what it was for.
Right, so then... All right, that's...
It's just not showing yet, because I haven't had the audit. Well, the year's not over.
As of three-one, we approved seventy-seven for salt. And as of March first, we've spent thirty-eight of the seventy-seven.
Oh, let me look to see how much, because I paid...
We just did two more in last...
Yep, last week is all.
Yep.
And the sand. Twenty, in twenty-twenty-four, we spent forty-seven.
This is, uh, episode of the last Sleutman's meeting. We spent forty-nine thousand in salt. Forty-nine, two seventy-one.
In salt.
I don't think we have any more bills. Yep.
Yeah, ninety-five grand on salt. Crazy.
Can we, can we knock that down to eighty-nine?
No, less than that. Look at the numbers.
Oh, couple of years, it was a hundred thousand, then nine, four thousand.
Keeps going up.
But then it went down.
You don't know what it's gonna cost.
Of course, we didn't have, we had, we had no snow, and we had flooding at Christmas last year. Not this past year before.
We should have another ice dome. It's iffy.
Well, the thing is, is we're gonna end up buying that. He's making an estimate.
Right.
But...
We don't know the price yet either.
Price yet.
Right.
How about eighty? And under sand, we had a high of forty-seven thousand in twenty-twenty-four.
But like I said, that, you know, they'd fill it and use the rest of the money for the next year, and they kept lapping over, so I'm not sure what we need.
Forty-five?
Forty-five or fifty?
Well, it was twenty-one, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, forty-seven.
Then twenty-three.
We don't know what we spent. Well, twenty-three was approved. We don't know what we actually spent yet.
I think some of that forty-seven is gonna go towards this current year. According to the auditor. The auditor who?
What's thirty-five hundred times nineteen fifty? It'll go at least to forty-seven.
Thirty-five hundred yards. Part of that.
Sixty-eight, two fifty.
Sixty-eight, two fifty, you guys. It cost us to fill the building at thirty, say thirty-five hundred yards. Bet nineteen dollars and fifty cents. So this fall, we gotta fill it. It'll be empty.
The gas prices coming down, hopefully you won't be, we put the, put the sand out to bid to everybody around.
We have a three-year contract.
Did we just sign that?
Yeah, it's just, last year wasn't, seven thirty, twenty-four.
Is it three year?
I was thinking it was just a year.
No.
Three years.
I was thinking fifty.
It's what we don't have in songs, we just have...
It's a gamble, though.
Yeah, three years.
It's a gamble. It is, and that's where you're overflow for general fund, considering you have the emergency type things. The winters haven't been nearly as bad or as snowy, with the, with the exception of freak storms. It is a gamble. But there's, there's reserve in the general fund if we need to for such a thing.
Not for, I mean, you're allowed to go over budget. It just has to be approved at the next town meeting.
I think we should put fifty thousand in there. Not thirty-five.
You haven't been that high.
But last year's, uh, sand contract was like eight dollars more a yard. Because we couldn't get some of it coming in at twenty-two and twenty...
It was twelve, it went up to nineteen fifty.
So we're paying like eight dollars more a yard than we ever used to pay.
Fifty. Still think that's high.
Okay, we got fifty.
No rate, .241882.
What is it?
Point two four one eight.
We're getting there. We are getting there.
We're down two minutes, just... More than two minutes. School might change. County's not gonna change.
All right, let's look at our soldiers' loans.
Yep.
I can't imagine this is gonna make much of a difference.
They'll probably all be approved anyway. People get generous at the end of the night.
Except for a hundred dollar, that you sweep.
Yes.
Hundred dollars, we jammed in.
We should be doing it. Uh, we shouldn't be doing, unless we're gonna be doing all the nonprofit TVs, like main wire and stuff. I just don't think we should be, uh... And they asked for more. I just don't think we should be, uh...
Didn't I just see something from the mothers' club for the Easter egg hunt thing?
Yep, look in your new.
Oh, new one.
That's what you should be going by.
Last year, we all gave personally, and we didn't fund it.
Current year, we funded it.
Oh, this year we did?
Yep.
Send out...
One year, yep.
What was she asking? Hundred?
So the, the Easter egg hunt that's gonna happen this April, we gave her a hundred dollars back in July.
Channel ten went up, fifty bucks. Fifty requested. Knock that down a hundred? Huh?
Well, no, it used to be, the Sleutman would recommend all the local social services only, but it's up to you guys.
No.
It's up to you, whatever you think.
Well, there are stuff that directly affects our community that I just think, um... Like the library, the lake associations, our taxpayers.
Home health didn't request nothing?
You just gotta get home care and hospice isn't requested?
Wow.
Upfield rec, a thousand.
Our kids participate in that.
We call it steps, you know? You wanna keep all upfield at a grand?
Yep. As our kids go there for rec stuff and hard work.
Mark for news. About a thousand.
I'd like, uh, up above theirs. Yep. I would like safe voices, uh, not to be funded at all.
Right, right.
It's above that.
You want seven fifty?
We want seven fifty, and we didn't give them anything in, uh, twenty-four or twenty-five.
Okay. I wonder why.
They may not have requested, I'm not sure.
I think it is fine. Oh, you want, you want nothing?
Nothing.
Okay.
Soul Bill Club is, it's a pass-through. So I would suggest that we support that. It goes to pay for trail work.
Okay.
Hartford Heritage, I would suggest that. Nothing from Robinson Library, huh?
No. Well, Catherine moved away, so I don't know who's doing the budget.
So we just have them all, nothing.
Nothing.
Get revated, nothing. Upfield, new concepts, nothing.
I just think, like, Hartford, the food bank's really important, but I'm just like, can we keep it at a thousand and not go up to fifteen hundred?
Who's gonna recommend a thousand?
I mean, I know they've had a lot of cuts.
They have over fifty families.
I know.
They've got, they've got a lot of these savings, too, so... I don't know. They've got the savings. A thousand, they've got savings. Lifeline.
Except they've been funding them for a while. Where's their landing pad around here? I guess it depends on where the accident is.
The spy station somewhere.
Oh, here.
I know, over by...
My house, it's right by my house.
Yeah.
Do you want a can, channel ten?
Yep.
Nobody even watches TV anymore.
I do.
The kids are watching the internet, they're not watching our cam. Do you wanna cut them?
How about we suggest a thousand dollars versus, versus twenty-five hundred? And... And seniors plus, uh.
I'll do it a thousand.
Wheels on wheels and dining and, okay. You all right with seniors plus? Wheels on wheels.
Yeah, senior plus.
Plus.
Keeping it at a thousand.
And Lake is on cook. I'm all right with that.
I don't know how to say that. Ennis, you go tick.
Getting late, that's how I say it.
Me too.
I'm still good with that library.
I'm fine with that as well. What's the Hope Association?
I mean, it's in your book.
That's the place up the road where. They have, uh, what do you wanna call it? Kids. What about it?
Is it for kids or?
Yeah, it's for mothers. Kids, they have, uh.
Developmental disabilities.
Yes.
They started in nineteen fifty-six.
Yep.
Education and training, adult activity center.
Any back theatrical help? Do they even do anything down here?
I think they, we, they explained how much here. Uh, this is great enough to get like, imagine if we're just kind of, they could be sponsors.
Six Hartford residents.
Oh, six Hartford residents?
They, they spent two thousand seven forty-seven. And in uncompensated healthcare to your residents. So I have no insurance.
Are residents actually benefiting from that?
Acceptance, mental health.
I'm not.
We're all, no, we're supporting future research and treatment.
What is helping hearts?
Clothes, shoes, hygiene items over in Norway. South Paris. Um. I don't know. The Norway Town Office, they have free giveaways. For students, clothes and blankets, for homeless, medical equipment.
What, the end?
It's probably five or six in from the end.
Are you on the helping hearts?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know I found it.
Okay.
Did I found it?
Oh, they have a place in Oxford.
So they distribute field chairs, walkers, shower chairs. School supply, built backpacks. All those community members that they've identified.
Good. It's a new one.
Good with that, Liam.
There's no time. Um. Can I?
We'd be working with the budget committee too, so.
So you know how the auditor said about the sand, we spent it out of the wrong year. Well, they want us, they want. Fifty percent within thirty days out of the wrong year. Which we can't do unless we budget for it. So we have it next year. So if we budget fifteen thousand plus, half, it's another seventy-five hundred, we can pay them their fifty percent upfront. Which still doesn't make sense to me.
It doesn't because we don't own what sand and salt we use. We might have it all. We might use it all and not.
For the audit.
Right.
I.
But that's because we filled the sand shed at a better price because it was jumping up to thirty twenty.
But we spent it in the prior year and we're using it in this year, but doesn't it work seem? Whatever. But we could budget for it. The upfront down payment for our audit, so we have the money next time.
Right.
Or not, or we can just wait and stay on the list and then do it when they're ready.
Are you talking about the regular, like, fifteen thousand all over here, annual audit?
Fifteen thousand, yeah. They want half of, within thirty days of when you signed the engagement letter last meeting? Which we didn't budget for. They want a retainer for fifty percent of the estimated.
So can we add that to the agenda?
I, I.
Well, it would be a budget issue for next year because we don't have it this year. We're not paying it. We'll get our audit when we get our audit.
And when we, when they asked us for this before, we'll pay us for it.
I never, I, I'd, I'd say I'll pay it July first and they said, okay, but now they must be. You know, I might even. I don't know. They must be busy.
Right. Or strapped.
So we might wanna think of that before we're done.
Meeting, we're gonna need to add fifty percent to the previous.
So this last page is, uh, we've done half of it. So, gee, hold on. Much we can change. Except for the. Better tomorrow, two fifty here, which we just did, we knocked it down to.
Right.
So the first section did.
We don't know what the vegetation is gonna be.
Yeah, that's a little change, probably coming next.
Right, so did the county. Right, if the county is one sixty-nine, jumped up to two sixty, do they call them that?
Yeah.
Kidding.
Nope.
Did I make a mistake?
No, it was last year.
It was like a thirty thousand dollar error last year.
Seven.
One thirty.
It was seven thousand.
It was only seven.
Yeah. Their budget went up, but they were off by seven thousand, so we had to come up with another seven.
Oh, the twenty-nine.
Oh, they were, they were actually up sixty thousand and our share was seven grand.
Isn't that how it went?
No, our share was seven thousand off, so we had to add another seven thousand on, so they're already increased.
So their actual in twenty twenty-five is one sixty-nine?
What's this?
The twenty-four was one thirty-five nine.
Yeah.
And now it's one sixty-nine eight.
And.
And it's going up to two sixty-six.
Yes, and that's also based on our certified ratio with the state, our values. The school budget, the county budget. They're based on our. Yep.
See, this is, this is how the state gets more money to fund these groups. They just go, parking dollars have gone up and it's selling, so our valuation.
Their formula is based on the value of.
Of the profit, right.
And then three hundred thousand on.
Two sixty-six thirty-three.
So the actual. R S U ten for twenty twenty-five is fifteen seventy-three, one million five hundred seventy-three.
Yep.
And it's gonna jump up to one million eight hundred and three.
Depending on.
Their budget.
Their meetings and the vote.
Then just grab.
There's eight hundred and something thousand of it is based on our tax, state evaluation. And the rest of it is based on the voters.
Okay. All right. What do we do, we decide this? So there's a line item here, thirty grand for the overlay.
That's figured when we commit taxes, so it could vary. The assessors.
It's not like the overlay for payment needs to.
Right, yeah, I got you.
Hey!
Made you laugh though.
Is he?
It's a nail overlay. Can you pour over my nails a bit?
But if you guys do do a revale or across the board, there's always gonna be people filing for abatements. And that's where that money, the abatements would come from, overlay.
Okay, so in twenty-one, we spent thirteen hundred, twenty-two, twenty-nine hundred, twenty-three, thirty-seven hundred. Jumped up to twelve thousand.
Yep.
In twenty-four.
I don't remember what it was.
Bet I can.
We abated something, twelve thousand?
I'm just thinking the place on the strip.
It didn't cost us anything in overlay. We didn't abate that.
All right.
Have to look.
The overlay gets thirty grand.
That's something the assessors are gonna put in. I just put an estimate in there.
It's an estimate. We don't control that number. Three thousand eight. So where do you wanna? That's a lot. What, E E? G A, you wanna jump up from a grand to three?
I suggested that we do. I don't know how you guys feel.
There. Um. I think this will need more people applying, especially with the tax issues.
There you go. I don't wanna use it, but. Let me know. So where do you want us to put in? Didn't, didn't we, what's, have we got that on here? What did we currently spend? This year, this year for G A.
Um, sixteen seventy-six. But we did get some money back, which doesn't show. We got reimbursement, takes a little while.
Some of it, yeah. Remember ten ninety-nine those folks?
Huh?
We're supposed to ten ninety-nine of rental assistance.
So where do we, where do you want that line item for the audit?
It would be upfront in the audit, way up top.
In the, in the very beginning?
Yeah, it's way up. Contracted services, it's probably page one. We don't have to, but if you wanna secure them next year.
I think that's fine, you gotta pay them anyway. Eagle, April.
It makes sense to me.
And they do it every year, right?
Evidently now.
Did we, did we go through this whole thing? Seventy-five.
I filled in all the numbers that you didn't change in the last meeting, just so we would have a total at the bottom, but you can change anything you want.
So I'm gonna support the, that we just did a lot of the day.
So the IT guy says we actually should have this and this and this. It's all in your book. He said ten thousand for Buckfield. That's what they budget. I don't know if we need all that.
You're talking about, you're talking about the software support.
Yep, um.
We ever set on here?
Oh, maybe not, sorry.
I have concerns on the bottom.
Software support is Trio. I was gonna put in. An estimate to go to Trio Web, which is, um, online instead of. On a server, because we would have to make sure we had a big enough, but we would have to make sure we had a big enough computer that would. Support that, and I just forget it for this year because it's extra. You're tired.
Yeah, done. We can go through it more.
Well, the best part is, uh, we'll be working with the budget committee starting next week. And they might see things that we overlooked.
Yep.
And we did on the first night and decided now that we know the numbers that we wanna cut more, right? We've changed the last two years. Right, Kevin?
What did we get it down to, Liam?
Did you, were you putting, um, that fifty percent for the next audit in there? So it's twenty-two five? Instead of fifteen?
No, fifteen.
Oh, just fifteen, so now fifty percent.
Fifteen hundred, right?
Yeah.
No, it's fifteen thousand.
What voltage is that?
Audit is fifteen thousand?
It is.
Yeah, it was.
So anxious.
It was twelve, now they're going up. I think there, there's a shortage of auditors.
Right.
Being a gentleman.
The ones we just had at work were like twelve years old.
All right, I'll leave it at fifteen for now.
Fifteen.
Okay.
And that, that covers our, our, our unit audit. So where are we at?
We're still eight hundred and. Eight hundred and five thousand two sixty-six over what was approved last year. But the mill rate, point two four one six. That's with taking thirty thousand out of fund balance to reduce taxes.
The school, we don't know yet.
Right, we really know what's gonna happen there. It's so hard not having control over spending. So many people have got control over what we have to pay. We don't really have a good say in it.
My brain hurts.
All right, so I'll print updated ones for next meeting, so you're gonna have a whole pile of confuses.
Can I keep the purple notebook? I don't wanna bring it home. I just like the purple.
Yeah, put it, hide it somewhere.
Hide it somewhere. Um, can I actually, would we do this?